This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August Board of Select meeting. I'm Mike Frida, North Haven's first selectman, joined by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Welcome. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, are there any public comments to tonight's agenda? All right, we'll go to item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Select meeting of July 6th.
I will make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion by Sally.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, I just have a couple of things I'd like to make mention of. Number one, you may have seen it on social media, we're bringing in Abates Restaurant over on State Street in North Haven. Now, what happened, and I wanted to clarify something, the Worcester Street location burnt down. So Lou Abate is whom I'm working with, he's the owner. So we orchestrated it where he's coming to State Street, the O River House, who ended up going out of business. That owner did a great job for 22 years, decided to move on. I've had several conversations with him also. But apparently, one of the news media has reported that it's temporary in North Haven. It's not temporary. It is a permanent location. Mr. Abate from Abates has put in a significant amount of money in this restaurant, and it'll be a permanent location. The intention is, over on Worcester Street, the person and the company or the family that owned that location, from which Abates was leasing, their intention is to rebuild the restaurant. And if that happens within a couple of years, then the Worcester Street location could potentially reopen, but North Haven will remain as a permanent location. So I wanted to make mention of that. Working closely with Home Goods, we're looking at an opening sometime in October down at Universal Drive. We're trying to get it opened up prior to the holiday shopping season. Over on the Parisi property, which is diagonally across from the fairgrounds, the Parisi family and myself have worked for many years to try to figure out a solution there, and there will be the Hennessy family going there. The name of the company is Forbes Fuel, but what it's like is a Cumberland Farms format. There would be a beautiful store, there will be groceries sold in the store, and beverages, there'll be breakfast sandwiches, there'll be breakfast items, and there'll be luncheon sandwiches there, and perhaps even some, what they have on the turnstile, some hot takeout food, in addition to a gas component. So that fills about four acres that's been vacant since Parisi Motors closed years ago. And then, those are the three things right now. There's a lot of other projects, I'll probably update everyone on in September. So that's kind of a quick overview. But I want to turn tonight's attention to Sally Buemi. She asked us to put this on the agenda, and Sally, I want to turn this over to you, please, okay?
Yes, thank you, Michael. I put on the agenda, requested, and you put on the agenda an issue that has taken up a lot of my time lately, the creation of a fair rent commission pursuant to 7-148B of the Connecticut General Statutes. And I made a copy of that statute and the ones that accompany, for you and Bill, there's one for you too, Val. And I wanted to just give the reasons why I think this is important, and then why I'm bringing this up now, and some sort of plan of action for you gentlemen to think about. Obviously, you know, no action is being taken or proposed for tonight. It's just some thoughts that I wanted to share with you, based on my own experiences as an attorney. I've been getting some calls from clients asking about their rights. Now, this has to do with housing only, housing accommodations, not commercial, just residential housing accommodations. And clients have asked about their rights when a landlord makes a significant rent increase for a housing unit. Most recently, I was contacted by a North Haven resident, a renter of an apartment in an apartment complex in town, been there for 22 years, in her late 70s, and she received a written notice of her lease renewal that contained a rent increase of 77%, which in dollar amounts was about $750. And to me, that was a pretty outrageous increase for one year. It wasn't a phase in, it was, you know, going into effect as soon as the lease renewal period started. And sure, for a person living on social security, or maybe with some part-time work, that type of an increase is just almost impossible. And I advised her on the law in Connecticut and her rights, and as you know, any municipality, according to the statute, may adopt through their legislative body an ordinance to create a rent control commission. They have that option. Any municipality with 25,000 people or more must have one. We, according to the most recent, the 2020 census, we're at 24,253. So we certainly are not required to have a rent commission, and I understand that very clearly. But Mike and Bill, what I want to say is, sometimes in life, you do things because you should do them, and maybe not because you have to do them. And I think that this is one of those cases here. There is no statewide rent commission control, it is left up to the municipalities. And if you live in a town like ours without a rent, a fair rent commission, there is really no place to go. If you are over 62 or disabled, and you live in a complex with five or more units, you have the right to petition the court, the Superior Court, for review of a proposed rent increase. But then you have to retain your own attorney, pay court fees, and for folks in that age group who are disabled, are they, you know, if they're having trouble with a net rent increase, are they going to be able to afford to retain an attorney and go through court? I don't think so. And for anyone else, there's really no option. A fair rent commission is really the only way to ensure that rental increases are fair and equitable. That is, if you review the statutes I provided with you, that is the threshold. Landlords are certainly entitled to make a profit on their investment in an apartment complex. But a fair rent commission is designed to prevent excessive harsh and unconscionable residential rent increases. And so, to me, this fair rent commission, which again is for housing only, commercials are not involved, I would say market forces really control commercial leases, you know, it's really the only way that folks in town could go somewhere for a review of a proposed rental increase. So some people might say, well, why should the town do this? Renters don't pay taxes. Well, that's not always accurate. First of all, they may very well be paying car taxes. And secondly, the rent that they pay collectively to a landlord is used to pay the taxes on the whole property. Renters are a part of our community. They vote, they shop here, they have kids in the school system, they're part of our town. And during the budget season, for example, we always talk about the impact of a proposed tax increase, and how that could affect the average homeowner. And I started thinking about that, and I thought, well, that may make people who are tenants, renters in town, feel that they are sort of out of the equation, maybe second-class citizens to some degree. And the other thing that I want to stress is, our residential tenant numbers are increasing. We have had, in recent years, many large apartment developments, and we currently have some ongoing. State Street, and on the east and west side of Northern Washington Avenue, I think that the percentage of citizens renting in town is significantly higher in 2013 than it was as recently as maybe 10 years ago, because of the development of apartment units. Obviously, this would have to go to a town meeting through the adoption of an ordinance that would create a fair rent commission. So tonight, I'm just asking the two of you to think about it, to review the statutes. Perhaps we, as the Board of Selectmen, can hold a public hearing and encourage landlords and tenants in town to come forward and give us their opinions on whether or not a fair rent commission is appropriate for North Haven. And I just wanted to summarize, I have really five, in summary, six basic reasons why I think we should just consider this. First, any municipality, as I said, may create a fair rent commission. We don't have to, we don't, we're about 750 people short of being required to, so we're almost there. That's the second reason, we're very close to this threshold of requirement. Third, as I said, our percentage of renters is increasing. And unless a tenant is over 62 or disabled, they really have no other way to challenge a rent increase. And if they are 62 or older or disabled, they have to go through expensive court litigation to question a rent increase. And finally, it's very clear to me that we have an aging population in town, which means we have a lot of folks on fixed incomes. Therefore, we have a lot of renters on fixed incomes. And I think that those kinds of folks are exactly why fair rent commissions exist, and why the state legislature requires municipalities with 25,000 or more people to have them. So this is just something that I have been thinking about. I think that it's just, I'm just asking for you to think about it. I mean, government is a service. We have a lot of boards and commissions, ladies and gentlemen, that provide services. We have a park and rec commission that oversees and provides recreational opportunities for all of our citizens. We have a library board that makes our library serve our citizens as best it can. We have an aging commission, a community services commission. These commissions are part of our town government, and they have specific purposes to help enhance and approve and come up with new ways to serve our citizens. And I think that a fair rent commission falls within that category. It gives folks the opportunity, who have been presented with an outrageous rental increase, like the person who contacted me had, it gives them an outlet to at least make a plea for a lower rental increase. And the statute spells out the criteria that the commission will consider to determine if the rental increase is appropriate or not. As I said, I'm not sitting here saying, you know, I don't want anyone to think, oh, no, Sally's against landlords. Landlords have a right to raise their rents to meet their increasing costs. Obviously, taxes here in town have gone up, insurance costs, repair costs go up, they would have their opportunity to establish the reasons behind their rent increase. But for those reasons, I respectfully ask that you review the statutes, even though we don't have to do this, I think, given all the reasons that I've outlined, it's just worthy of some thought, and maybe in a month or two, we could address it, and you could give your opinions, or maybe you have opinions on it right now. So thank you for letting me explain why I started thinking about this, and why I think it's appropriate for our town right now.
All right. I know, Bill, you know, recently retired, so he is actually, he has actually spent a lot of time analyzing the statute, I think, so you...
Or maybe not as much as Sally, but, you know, and I think both of us saw Sally in the paper, you know, the issue with Bridgeport not even having an active one, and that was also in an editorial today in the Register and in yesterday's Register regarding... So, you know, one of the things that was notable about, you know, and Bridgeport truly is larger than we are, but the reason I think that they put a "may" in our case, because we're below the limit of $25,000, is that, you know...
25,000 people.
Or 25,000 people, I'm sorry. Is because there is expense with this, or potentially expense. And Bridgeport was actually looking to hire a full-time person for their rent, you know, rent commission. And if you look at the, you know, in paragraph B here of 7-148B, you know, there is a lot of involvement with this. "A commission for such purposes may compel the attendance of persons at hearings, issue subpoenas, administer oaths, issue orders, and continue review, amend, terminate, or suspend any of its orders and decisions. The commission may be empowered to retain legal counsel to advise it." So it seems like, you know, it requires expertise, legal cost, and even if, and the notion of what's fair sometimes, I think, as you were pointing out, is, because I've been both a renter and a landlord, as well as a homeowner now, one person's view of fair, you know, maybe the example you gave, that seems clearly maybe that that was unfair, but, you know, is 10% fair, or is 25% fair, or, fair is a very, could have a lot of meanings to different people. So it may also open us up to litigation that... So, you know, I think the reason there is a cap over which, you know, the 25,000 population is, is because it does maybe put an additional economic burden on us, you know, to actually have this commission, have the legal counsel necessary, maybe even find people who have that expertise.
Right.
So those are my concerns, is that...
I understand that. Well, our planning and zoning commission, our police commission, they have the right to subpoena people, they have hearings, they have legal counsel, they can get involved on litigation. It's a necessary part of that service. Planning and zoning is an important service to the people of the town in enforcing our planning and zoning regulations, and ensuring that any development is in compliance with those regulations. So, yes, there's lots of expenses with, there's legal expenses with our planning and zoning, with our inland wetlands, with our BLIT commission, you know, that's just how it goes. I just think, you know, by the way, I put this on the agenda, I believe, Monday, and this article and the editorial came out after I put it on, so I don't want you to think I read this and said, oh my god, this, I thought it was really strange.
You were clairvoyant, that's...
Well, or maybe they saw the agenda, I don't know, whoever wrote this article. But it came out in yesterday's paper, August 2nd, and I submitted this to Val on Monday, so, you know, I didn't get the idea from the paper or from any editorial. I got the idea from very upset, scared people calling me. That's what gave me the idea.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This is more of your opinion. Now, you and Bill have obviously gone through the statute a lot more than I have, but, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding on this is that, if you look at North Haven, we have our own housing authority, which is CHAFA-funded, so we have a housing authority that regulates the rent, and there's an appeal process. On the HUD-funded facilities, which are Stevens Woods, Oakview, Wood's Edge, no rent commission has any authority over HUD-funded subsidized facilities. So now, we have five facilities right there who are excluded from a rent commission. When we add Karma Romano in, which is also government subsidized, there's six. The rent commission has no jurisdiction or any federally funded units. So that leaves us Avalon, White Pond, and Briarwood. And other than one call we got a few months ago from White, well, somebody at White Pond, White Pond went up from $1,000 a month to $1,200, and the city in New Haven called me, and they said, "Mr. Frida, could you help somebody there?" I said, "So what seems to be the problem?" Well, there's, we have one of our employees who lives in White Pond. "Would you be willing to talk to the property manager?" So I said, "Of course." So I called the property manager. And the property manager said to me, "Mr. Frida, yes, we went up $200, but we put a letter out, we have our own appeal process, if there's a hardship that, that's why our appeal process is in place, and just out of courtesy to you, sir," they said, "here's the reasons why," and we illustrated this in the letter, "why we went up. We had to put a new HVAC system in, we had to replace all the kitchens and bathrooms, a new roof had to go on the facility. So we put a letter out to the residents explaining why, but we didn't get anyone to appeal it." So if you extract the major population of dwellers currently, I'm not counting the 225 apartments yet on Washington...
I was going to mention those, plus there's the flats.
Plus the flats, okay, but...
So you left them out.
But these are...
That's two big buildings.
Two big buildings.
Of renters.
But we have five facilities that are not even part of this. Now, the two buildings, Quinton-Piac's doing a master lease in, at the flats, they've done it, they're doing a master lease over at Vigliotti's here, so I'm kind of torn on it. That story you just mentioned is a heart-tugging story.
Right.
But, you know...
And again, I'm not sure, you know, the best I could find just going online, that according to the data I could find from census data and other locations, seems like we have owner-occupied units are 82% of the town, renters are 18%. Total number of units in the town are, which seems reasonable based on our population, there's 9,863 units.
Right.
So 18% of those is like 1,775 units, and then you back out what Mike said, you know, you're under 1,000.
Right, well...
So the number is actually relatively small.
Well, to your point about being concerned, you mentioned Bridgeport, and, you know...
Which they've been situated.
Their concern about having to hire a fair rent commissioner, you know, they have thousands of rental units. So the argument that you're making about fewer rental units, actually, in my opinion, helps my argument, because it would not be that much of a draw on our resources if it is just 1,000 people involved. So, you know, so you're actually giving an argument and saying there aren't that many buildings, you're helping my argument, say, this would not be a drain on the town.
But I can guarantee...
It would be like the BLIT commission.
But that's become a drain, by the way, but that's a different story. But hear me out on this thing.
I hope it's not like the BLIT commission.
So what you just mentioned, technically, you're right. But for us to try to explain that to the thousands of people in the five or six facilities who don't understand the intricacies of the statute, they're going to have an expectation level that we can't deliver on if we put a rent commission together. And those are all elderly people who are not going to understand the very explicit way, the way you explained this tonight. They're not going to understand it, they're going to say, "Rent commission, we're going to, you know, we're going to appeal." And they have no right to appeal, because it's HUD-funded or CHAFA-funded. But look, you're asking us for consideration, right?
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, the statute says that it's, every 10 years when you reach 25,000. Now, we reached 24,253 in 2020. So do you think by 2030, we might be, you know, be at 25,000? I don't know. It just, we're so close.
But so far.
And again, I'm not, that's why I started out saying, sometimes you do things that you should do, even if you don't have to do it. And maybe, you know, I don't know exactly about your numbers, but I'll stick with them, so maybe after subtracting out the CHAFA and the FHA units, you're down to 1,000 renters. Do they deserve an outlet to go to if they feel that they're getting an unjustifiable increase? I'm not talking about a 10 or 15% increase.
I understand.
Talking about someone who was faced with a 77% increase, nowhere to go for that. And so, you know, so you're saying, well, it's only 1,000 people. I think 1,000 people is important. So that's why I just wanted you to think about it, or even think about having a public hearing on it. And I am always in favor of the wisdom of the group, and if, you know, we had a public hearing, what was that that we had, Al, over at the library?
Yeah.
It was...
Housing, affordable housing.
The housing-related, the affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
So we are, we don't have public hearings very often, the way planning and zoning does, they have quite a few. But we could do it, right, guys? Come on. And we could invite people...
Well, we'll hear tonight, a couple people here will speak.
To see if they're, and if I'm the only one who cares about that, those 1,000 people, then that's fine, then we'll just have to wait till we get to 25,000, and then we'll be forced to do it. I guess I'm just trying to say...
It's not that we don't care about them.
Yeah.
You know, I think, you know, the other issue is...
What is it exactly?
Well, the other issue is, is that maybe it requires, you know, and I know, you know, I know some people would object to this as just a further intrusion on the part of big government into the lives of, you know, people who are trying to rent their, you know, and somebody gets a 10% increase, and then you're going to have somebody come to Fair Housing to complain about a 10% increase, but that seems well within the inflation, what's happened from an inflationary standpoint. So I could see an argument about, you know, this is just another mandate from the state, and unfortunately, it's cut off at a, or we're below the population criteria. Another mandate from the state where it just passes another burden back onto a town or municipal, or a city to try to deal with these things, when it ultimately is an issue that should be dealt with, you know, just like, you know, like you said, it doesn't apply to commercial properties.
No.
It should be dealt with between the landlord and the tenant.
Mm-hmm.
And if the tenant, if the landlord can get a 10% or 20% increase, then why should we tell him not to get that increase?
We're not. If you read the statute, it says if they establish reasons for the increases, that they're going to get it.
It's pretty easy to say right now that 10 or 20% is reasonable.
It may be, but, you know...
But let's see, somebody else may not, and that'll end up bringing...
I just wanted to address your issue...
The notion of fair, like, to me, is a very, very nebulous word, what fair is.
Well, most statutes have fair and reasonable as companion terms for, that guide everything in our lives. But just to respond to your point about this would be a government intruding or invading, I mean, our government, through our BLIT ordinance, tells our people, our 8,200 homeowners, you can't have your grass more than eight inches tall, or you could be 10 inches, whatever it is, there's a limit in the ordinance that says your grass can't be more than this high. So if we, we as a town can tell those thousands of homeowners a limit on how high your grass could be, why can't we have a commission that will reasonably evaluate a rental increase that comes before them because a tenant says that it's excessive?
I'm actually going to propose a repeal of that ordinance, because I think eight inches or more is eco-friendly, and it actually is good for bees and butterflies, and we should actually look at people not cutting their grass, which...
One more point for our consideration as this moves forward, is that, you know, I'm friendly with a lot of cities and towns, and those that are mandated to do it are kicking and screaming, they don't want to do it, but they have to do it. I won't mention two towns that I know definitely and others, but the two towns that I know that are forced to do it, they can't find anybody to serve, because no one wants the responsibilities of that type of commission, and they're struggling right now. Now, the towns and cities are saying, "We're mandated to do this, but what do we do if we can't get anyone to serve?" So that's happening right now. And these towns are... And these towns are just over the threshold. So 28 and 32,000, I think it is, so, or 30,000. So that's something we have to contemplate, too.
Okay. Well, again, we're 750, not 7 or 8,000 over. We're 750 under. Everybody out there, I know we don't have to do this. It just seems like the right thing to do. And all I'm asking is that you consider it, maybe have a public hearing on it. And if, if, if the public hearing is overwhelmingly against it, then, then so be it. But I have noticed this problem in my practice of law and, oh, excuse me. My glass fell apart. I know, I see it. I'm, I'm not gonna bend down and get it. I am going to just read with one eye. Where are you, Mike? Do you believe this happens? Uh-oh, maybe this is an omen, I don't know.
I'd like to do, you know, more, you know, more research as well.
Fine, well, thank you for listening. And we could talk about it again.
We'll talk about it.
Or not talk about it, but hopefully we'll talk about it again. You know, you said you had 7,000 people. You talked to 7,000 people about the supernumerary. Maybe a few thousand will call you on this and, and you could report back.
That was over five years, though, so that wasn't.
Oh, over five years.
Not recently, it was over five years.
It's, I just want.
And having been a, been a landlord, not, not recently, but I always felt it was better to have a good tenant and actually lose a few dollars than have a bad tenant. Because, you know, what is, you know, and you know better than I do, being an attorney, the, the laws of the state of Connecticut to evict somebody is stacked against the owner. So, so, you know, if, if the rent's not fair, how long, Sally, would you think, you know, it will take to evict somebody if they wanna, if they don't wanna pay that 20% or 30% or 50% increase? Could live there for six months, for eight months? Year for free?
I'd say six months.
See, so right there, you know, you've already got a, you know, so you got six months to live there for free and then you can go move somewhere else.
But if it's a fair rental increase, they'll stay because.
Yeah, maybe not.
That's my argument.
Even 10%.
Anyway, my intentions are good.
It's a complicated, a complicated issue.
I, I hope that both of you will.
Oh, yeah.
Acknowledge that my intentions are good and I thought it out well. I didn't just say, oh, I'm gonna, you know, make a big stink. I'm not here to make a stink. I'm here to potentially effectuate positive change that may assist a significant portion of our citizens. And it's just an idea. I mean, every, every good thing and every bad thing starts with an idea. And this is just an idea that I have proposed. And you guys could look over the material that I've given you and we'll think about it and take it from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally.
Okay.
But I think you're, I think you're right, though, that, that, you know, we want people to stay in town. We, you know, we have a, we have a senior, 23% of our population, from what I can tell, is, you know, considered to be seniors. And we want, we want them to be able to stay. And that kinda goes hand in hand also with, you know, the affordable housing issue. So, you know, I, it's definitely something we can, that I, I'd like to learn more about and consider more, just as you, as you've suggested, Sally.
All right.
So thank you.
Who would like to start the resignations and appointments?
Phil, why don't you take the first one? I'm fixing my glasses.
No, thank you. Well, since it's in both cases, I'll make a motion for the resignation of Richard Lopresti, formerly of 175 Sentinel Hill Road, from the housing authority, term to expire December 31st, 2026.
I will second the acceptance of that resignation.
So in the discussion, I'd like to say that this is a wonderful man, and I've worked so closely with him down through the years. Richard lived on Sentinel Hill in North Haven. And he is an empty nester. And he decided golf now in retirement is his passion. So Rich bought a condominium in Florida. He still stays in touch with us. In fact, he called Val and Tammy today just to touch base. So he's a permanent resident of Florida. House is sold on Sentinel Hill. And of course, when something like that happens, you have to be a town resident to serve on these commissions. So, Richard, I don't think you're watching, but if you do see a tape or a replay of this meeting, I just wanted to let you know that I think you're the consummate gentleman. It's been our pleasure to work with you and we miss you, but we wish you the very best. Thank you very much.
I'll second, I'll second those comments.
Yes, I would also like to thank Richard, who I have known since I was 14 years old. Thank him for his devotion is really the only word, devotion, to our town.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
And then we, we have also resignation from Richard Lopresti, formerly of 175 Sentinel Hill, from the Economic Development, Development Commission, term to expire December 31st, 2024. So I'll move for the acceptance of that resignation.
I'll also second that one.
All right. Richard, my same comments apply. Thank you for all your years of service on this Economic Development Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Next, I'll make a motion, which I think we're also sorry to see, resignation of James Redman, 47 Pool Road, from the Cemetery Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2024.
I am sadly seconding that.
Jim, I'd like to thank you very much for your service. Now, Jim brought a lot of expertise to this commission. He had been involved with cemeteries for years. So I thank you very much, Jim. And Sally, if you wanna come forward with a recommendation to replace him.
Yes, I will do that. I did wanna ask you something, Michael, about what he mentioned in his resignation letter. He said that the Cemetery Commission hasn't met in almost two years. Is that, I mean, we've been out of the pandemic pretty well for a while, but it was his, he was discouraged with that and lack of activity. Could you explain why the Cemetery Commission has not met in almost two years?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll tell you what I think, okay? There's not a lot going on with the Cemetery Commission because we have an outside contractor in public works that handle the grounds. People call us for, let's say, a gravestone that tumbled over in Elm Street Cemetery. We don't involve the Cemetery Commission with that. There's only four meetings a year. So they had a tough time getting a quorum in many respects.
Oh, that's right, there are just four, yeah.
Four meetings a year. So a lot of the cemetery maintenance is done by an outside contractor. We have a cemetery fund that we will utilize to pay for some of this. So the maintenance of the cemeteries is a regular type thing, it's every week. And I think part of the problem with the Cemetery Commission has been no quorums and to meet once a quarter. Really, the only business is that is reported. And Ed would do this, God rest his soul. All right, you know, we maintain this cemetery. We did this at that cemetery. And there's, there's not a lot for them to do. And I think that has bred some complacency in the commission with the lack of quorums. I know Jim well and I know that that was very important to him. That's why we put him on in the first place. So, I think that's part of it.
Maybe they'd wanna serve on a rent commission. They have nothing to do. No, I'm sorry, I don't mean to. But anyway, okay, so I think we've.
Yes.
Motioned and seconded on that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I hope maybe there are other things that, you know, that Jim can do because I think he would do them, do them well.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I will make a motion to reappoint Alan F. Riggs, 171 Clintonville Road, to the Conservation Commission for a four-year term to expire August 31st, 2027.
Is there a second?
I'll second Alan's reappointment.
Alan, thank you for your willingness to serve. Alan was a longtime volunteer firefighter for the town, retired a few years ago. He approached us, this is a real passion for him. And I thank you for your, for your willingness to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll motion for the reappointment of Raymond Sola, 44 Cloudland Road, to the Conservation Commission for a four-year term to expire August 31st, 2027.
Second.
Ray is a wonderful man and thank you for what you do for the town of North Haven. Ray, you're at all these events when there is either Earth Day, the Conservation Commission events. So it's our honor to have you reappointed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
We have bond releases on item seven. First one is I-20-03, 15 Cotton Tail Lane, also known as Sundown Place. I means it's inland wetlands. The amount of the original bond is 2,500. The current balance of the bond is 2,500. I will make a motion to release the entire bond balance of 2,500 with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Town Engineer.
Is there a second?
I'll second that bond release.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, next.
Next bond release is number 123-06.
I-23.
Oh, I can't read without my glasses. I should put my glasses back on.
You want mine?
I took them off. I'm gonna put them back on 'cause I, I look like a, but I, without my glasses on, I look like a one. Thank you, Sally.
Okay.
The next one is bond release, I-23-06, 19 Valley Brook Lane. The amount of the original bond is $3,500. The current balance of the bond is $3,500. The motion is release the entire bond balance of 3,500 with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Town Engineer.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have P-22-20, 150 Universal Drive. P is for Planning and Zoning. Amount of original bond, 3,500. Current balance of the bond is 3,500. I will make a motion to release the entire bond balance of 3,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Engineer.
I'll, I'll second that bond release.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last bond release is, I got my glasses on this time and these are actually ones, number P-19-19, 600 Universal Drive. Amount of original bond, $12,500. Current balance of bond, $12,500. I'll motion for the, I'll make a motion for the release of the entire bond balance of $12,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Engineer.
The second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight on our agenda is property tax refunds. I will make a motion to approve the refunds listed in our agenda.
I'll second the Sally's motion to approve those property tax refunds.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next regular meeting of our Board of Select is Thursday, September 7th here at Memorial Town Hall. We're at the point tonight, ladies and gentlemen, of public comment. Any comments?
Sherman Katz, Sherwood Drive. Good evening. Nice to see you guys. I have a couple of items. The hotel on Universal Drive, that's the new, there's a new new one going in, is that correct?
Yes, Sherman.
Which is?
Hampton Inn.
Hampton. Did you know there's a new hotel in Hampton?
Yes, I'm very well aware.
Beautiful place. I, I had to help someone get a room over there. Red Thread, I, I see they're gone, or that name is gone from the building that.
Yes.
On State Street.
Yep. They were part of a merger and acquisition, so the company's under a new name and that 297,000 square feet is fully populated, just a new name, new company.
Oh, just new name, so they didn't move out? Just wanna comment on what Sally brought up. And did you question why or investigate why there was a 77% increase on her rent?
No, I, I read the notice and it did not delineate a reason. It just said, this was it and that's it. It would've been helpful if it.
If it explained why it was a 77% increase.
There isn't our explanation.
Yeah. All right, then, a question about Hartford Turnpike between the bridge over Route 15, and it's either Divine Street or Dixwell Avenue, I don't remember which. Many years ago, that was a state road. That section was state in addition to the other parts of the Hartford Turnpike. And for some reason, North Haven became the owner of that road. Which means we have to maintain it, repair it, plow it, and so on. Can you, do you know why?
That was before my time, Sherman.
I know it was before your time, prior to you.
I mean, we can look in the records, maybe the town clerk has a record of it. Now, the state has responsibilities over the bridges.
The bridge, right.
Over, near Liberty. There was some paving the state just did between the Parkway and Route 22, that was theirs. Last year, we paved our portion of that, of the northern side of that. But we can certainly look into it.
It's a financial responsibility.
Right.
Okay, so, yeah, I would, I would like to know about it someday. Sacapoint Road Bridge.
You were asking why, why we had to pave it versus.
Why we, why we had to take it and can we give it back to the state?
And they'd be responsible for paving it or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, I think we had the same situation. Yeah, I live on Basset and I think we're responsible for paving over 91, right? On Basset, I think we paved that. They fixed the bridge, but I think we paved it. So maybe.
Because Hartford Turnpike is a, is a state highway.
At one time, you're right. That's exactly right.
That's a good question.
Yeah, it was, it was before your time, I know that.
All right, we'll check that out.
Okay. Sacapoint Road Bridge, I know that, or I understand that the town has a responsibility for a portion of that cost, which has probably escalated exponentially since it was originally conceived.
Yep.
What are we responsible for?
10% of 13 million and the costs have escalated. But we worked it out with the state that the state will cover the escalation costs.
So we're, we're still at the 1.3 million?
Yeah, roughly.
Roughly. And when do we have to pay that, after it's completed or?
What happens in a case like this is, most of it's federal funded, some of it's state funded and we have the smallest percentage of the funding. But because we're the local municipality, we're the point people for getting phone calls and giving people updates. We are responsible under rigorous guidelines, federal government and state guidelines, to make sure we go out to proper bid process. We have, or obligated to hire an engineer, which we did early on. We have one of the leading bridge reconstruction companies in the United States who won the bid and they're doing it. And what happens is we act as a bank. This is the way it works. We have to pay the contractors invoices and then we submit for reimbursement.
Oh, okay.
So, and we get, we get reimbursed probably anywhere from 30 to 45 days, so.
That's not bad. If they go over 45 days, you could charge interest.
Oh, we, we have to start, we, you know, we, we don't charge interest, but believe me, we stay on top of it. See, that's why I don't like these projects. But we had to do it because the bridge would've collapsed. But the brunt of the responsibility, Sherman, is on the municipality. And that's a very tough spot to be in because we have our own expenses we're paying. Payroll, everything we do, there's an expense to it. But in these cases, we have to act as the bank and that's the way it's set up, so.
All right. At several fire commission meetings, the chief has stated he cannot hire paramedics because we do not offer a pension. According to him, only two towns or cities in Connecticut do not offer a pension for paramedics, and I'd like to get your reaction to this. He's, he, it's, I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but it, he keeps talking about not being able to hire because we don't have a pension. It's like he's advocating for a pension.
Right now, the union is not advocating for a pension. I mean, he makes a legitimate point, you know, they're highly specialized individuals. I think paramedics are difficult to find everywhere.
Yeah.
You know, what we're trying to do is see what type of incentives we can offer to try to attract paramedics, so I think the chief is right in what he's saying. There are other factors, and those are the things that we're contending with. Sometimes we're finding this in government. It's difficult to get good people.
In any, in any place, I mean, I know many people that are telling me they, they can't hire people.
Right.
And, and some of it is people are being paid to stay home.
And, you know, what's happening with us, quite frankly, in certain categories, we're, our salaries are less than what other municipalities are offering.
Yeah.
And what we're seeing is people jumping, so. And, you know, that's something that's difficult, because in order to be competitive, we have to raise salaries, and we have to go to the public, and, you know, you know, we're trying to do whatever we can to maintain a decent mill rate, but we're uncompetitive in many respects.
I can understand that, yeah. The other thing that I want to ask, say, comment on is, at the, the last Board of Fire Commission meeting, and I'm not picking on the fire department, because I've watched many of the commissions. There was a cryptic discussion between the chairman and the chief about getting permission from you and Mr. Monaco to do things without having to go through channels, and I, it was very cryptic, and I couldn't understand, and it got very quiet. Do you know anything about that?
Uh, no, I don't know what the.
I think it had something to do with purchasing and contracts.
All right, so we're never going to, we're never gonna do anything without going through the proper channels. What we're instituting in the finance department, I'm not sure if this was what the discussion was, but we don't want to pay POs without invoices. Oh, I'm sorry, we don't want to pay bills without a PO.
Okay.
And an invoice. I don't know if that was, if that's about, but.
That's normal business procedure, PO and an invoice.
Right.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're, we're tightening up in many areas here, because what's happening is, I'll give you an example. We pay vendors in two weeks through an ACH process. Some municipalities pay thirty, forty-five days. You know, we're very sound financially, and we're still triple A rated. I have another rating call later this year, so we, our tax collection rate's good, revenue is solid, so we're able to do this, okay? But sometimes what happens, and this has nothing to do with our departments, sometimes what happens is you create a level of expectation by the vendors, and they just want the payment, and sometimes we gotta be careful it doesn't get sloppy because of their expectation level. So what we're trying to do is, we'll pay invoices, purchase orders quickly, we need the invoice, we need a purchase order, that's kind of what we're doing, so. You did that, Sherman, when you were running.
We used to do purchase order, delivery receipt, and invoice.
Right.
Yeah, I know, because I had to sign checks.
You did, you signed the checks.
All right, and.
See, and I'm proud to say that we have a better rating than the federal government now, so. They're only double.
Well, we don't want to get into that. Lastly, the, the subjects you brought up, if we, if we formed a commission, we, we might have to have a professional as a, the chairman of the commission, which could be a very expensive situation. You know, by the time you hire someone of that caliber and pay his benefits, you're one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year easily, as well as all the legal expenses that go along with it. That's why I questioned what the seventy-seven percent was. I think, I'm not against it, but I think it needs an awful lot of consideration and investigation before we.
Well, the seventy-seven percent was the increase in the rent.
From that one person.
From that one person. I don't know for a fact that you're required to have a professional staff member run a fair rent commission, especially in a smaller town like ours. We have lots of, our Planning and Zoning Commission is mostly made up of lay, laypeople who make very important legal decisions about whether or not a site plan or any other proposal meets and is with the approval of our, of Planning and Zoning regulations. So, you know, the ordinance would establish the criteria to consider in accordance with the recommendations in the statute, and, you know.
Well, I'm just saying, you have to look at all, all the costs.
Absolutely, but you can't, you can't decide on something unless you look into it.
Yeah.
And that's what I asked for, is to look into this.
I, I suspect that you're gonna have an awful lot of figures on how this, how this will work, and which is what you do, that's just your job. Appreciate that. Have you heard from Ray Fowler lately?
No.
I've talked to Ray recently, you know.
Is he doing all right?
He is, I mean, you know, based on, and again, I hope I'm not saying that, that he would reject you, you know, I, I think as many of us know, you know, he's had some, you know, some issues that, you know, were particular to him, and, you know, and just like many of us, he has, you know, good days and bad days, so.
Because I know he, he, he always liked coming to these meetings.
I know.
He doesn't come to many.
He's probably watching us right now.
Hi, Ray. And thank you very much, and that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Yes, sir, Bill.
Bill Richards, North Avenue. Mr. Katz was talking about Hartford Turnpike, is that from Dixwell, the Route forty connector, the state homes up to the Parkway?
The bridge over there.
Who won? Just the bridge portion?
Yeah, just the bridge.
All right, he brought that up, and it brings back my mind that the guardrail system above those condos, apartments right there are all totally destroyed, and they really need to be looked at or replaced or something on that. You may want to take a look at that, because it's an old wooden post with the wire guardrails.
You're talking near Georgetown or down?
Yeah, Georgetown.
Georgetown.
Right by Allendale Drive there.
Just so you know, Bill, the problem with, these guardrails are anywhere from ten to twelve thousand dollars. You know, we don't have, we don't have anything budgeted for that.
But it's, it's something that's been probably nice for a lot of people over many, many years now. It's really needs to be addressed.
See, what happens is this, and Bill makes a good point, you, when you, when you're going southbound on Hartford Turnpike, there's a lot of congestion in there, people switching lanes, and what happens is the cars or trucks, they hit those guardrails. And we have, there's three guardrails in town in the past that we've replaced them, seven thousand dollars each, and forty-five days later, we're getting calls, a guardrail, people crashing into guardrails. We don't have the money to keep replacing.
Well, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just saying, it's, that section there is only like two lanes where Allendale comes in.
Yeah.
And comes, swings around, comes back out. And that's been, I don't know, nobody's ever brought that up over the years.
On that particular guardrail, Bill, you're the first one that's ever brought it up, but we'll take a look at it. I'll make a note, we'll talk to Public Works, okay?
Yeah, it's, it's probably been that way for many, many years, but just he brought that up tonight, and it just dawned on me, you know, and occasioned that I could bring it up tonight.
Okay.
All right, the other thing is, what's going on with the early voting, and how the towns are gonna be set up coming this November?
Yeah, I'd suggest we call Stacy on that, she's more on top of that than we are in this office. I think that to give you a broad, a broad overview, I think the Secretary of State has declared it's ten days, we're probably gonna have to hire extra people, and that's kind of what we're looking at right now, so.
So it may be just like the rec center, early voting? Otherwise, it's gonna cost the town a lot of money for opening up the other.
Well, so I think on ref, no, I don't think it's gonna be at the rec center, you know, just on the rec center, because any elections, okay, we're never gonna consolidate the schools to one district. We did it for referendum purposes only.
Yeah.
So, so, so to answer your question, it'll still be in all the schools, I'm never gonna change that, that's not, that's not fair to the residents.
We can't.
We can't.
Okay, so, yeah, I didn't know what we could just do with the rec center.
I thought early voting was gonna take place at the Town Hall.
Town Hall.
And there's no early voting in this election. It's, it's not in effect until.
Until next year.
Next year.
So it won't be until the presidential year election, whatever's going on at that time, right?
Right, I mean, we have a municipal election coming up, November seventh, twenty twenty-three. The, the early, there's not enough time to get early voting in, in, in the works for that election.
So it'll be another year, another year out then.
And I think the problem is, just like we talked about, is not necess, you know, even if we get some state funding, is, is like we talked about with the paramedics, and the, and the lack of people is, is that because ten days goes over a weekend or two weekends, you might have a hard time finding somebody to man, you know, based on the past, that we're traditionally paying for people to work at the polls.
Yeah, so, you know, it'd be like, it would be one weekend over the ten, really?
So, I mean, it's, it makes it tough, because I think, I think that, even the dollars, it's the staffing to find people that, who, you know, based on what, what's paid for poll workers, which is not a lot of money. I mean, they don't get a lot of money, it's more of a, you know.
Well, it's just that, and you have to have people there with the janitors or the school to keep it open.
Yeah, and on top of that, you're exactly right.
And you have to have police coverage there, so, you know, something that maybe for next year's budget, a year out, that we should generate some money put aside for that.
Well, we're hoping, the point's made here, there'll be state funding that helps support adding the additional part timers to handle early voting, so, but yeah, if we don't get that state funding, we're gonna have to in the next question.
Yeah, because it could be, it could be quite a bit of money.
Absolutely, yeah.
To keep it open. The other thing is, since we combined the dump over on Sackpoint Road over the year, I go down and take my recycling down there, now since they combined it, it's really, doesn't fit into the area, the neighborhood area, all right? It's a lot, a lot of odors from, what came from the Sackpoint area, Universal Drive.
Bill, if I could just, because I don't, I can give you an answer right now. It's only temporary, we're gonna change it. So we're gonna relocate it down on Powder Meadow Road. The reason it's there is that we basically were condemned on Universal Drive.
Right, I remember that.
Deep was putting a lot of pressure, we were out of code, so we had to move it over there on Elm Street temporarily, the transfer station.
Right.
It's there until we can mobilize, because there's a cost associated with, with getting it out of there. We have to pave an area, which will cost seventy-five thousand dollars, I have to have Public Works grade the area, we've gotta work with Johns to put the dumpsters over there, so it's only temporary.
Okay, yeah, because I know, I guess, basically, that's cemetery land that it's sitting on in there, if you look at the maps in the town, it shows cemetery right next to the, what do they call the thing, or next door there?
The raccoon.
Raccoon.
We've gone through this two years, right?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so, you know, that's why I'm wondering.
So we're not moving the recycle center, just the transfer station.
Just that will be going down there.
That's be going down, that's kind of the source of what you're saying, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, because it's, it just, right now, it just doesn't fit down in that area.
Well, you understand it has to fit, because we have no other options right now.
Right, right.
That's why it's there, so.
Okay. And a nice opening for the concert on the Green Tuesday night just past week.
Yeah.
With Quinn and Piak.
Quinn and Piak, I had the hockey, national hockey team there, the captains of the team.
Yeah.
The president and I worked out her coming, and then we had the little girls, the Spotlight Theater coming.
That was cute, that was something different.
People seemed to like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what's, the other thing I'm trying to do is have more events on the Green with the arts and the little girls and boys putting plays and singing, that's, Spotlight Theater is a good partner to have, so.
Yeah. Oh, and one thing, only the last thing I want to say is, we need to look at that gazebo over there. It's deteriorating. On the, you look at the facial boards on there, they're all, they're all starting to rot out on that, so it might be something to look at down the road, it's gotta be repaired. The only last question is, when's the new stage coming?
September twenty-fourth is the target date.
For the start on it?
It'll be, it'll be assembled, it'll be arriving on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Then we have to, we have to pour a concrete pad, we gotta make sure that it's on a solid base.
Yeah.
But it's arriving on or about the twenty-fourth, or Val, is it, I think it's the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Right, it, it, we won't start doing the work to put it in its place until the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, that's the date.
Yeah, okay, so right after the, the season ends.
Yeah, see, what's happening is, we also are working with the Chamber of Commerce to have a big business event on the Green, and that's September.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, so.
Right prior to it, yeah.
So we got all these businesses coming, it's gonna be a large event, and there's gonna be music, and they're gonna need to show more people, so that's why it's the twenty-fourth that it's gonna be assembled, we have to get through the twenty-third event. And then hopefully, if the weather's nice in the fall, you know, I'll be working with the arts groups across the town, maybe we can have some plays on the Green, you know, some singing, like we saw the other night with those little girls, and then, then we're gonna be ready to go next year with that dance now.
Big kickoff.
Yes.
Yeah, great. Okay, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thanks, William, thank you.
Good evening, Nancy Barrett, Cresview Drive. I never planned on speaking when I've come here, and then certainly everybody makes comments, and it jogs my memory about different issues that I've been thinking about. So first of all, I'd like to thank the, the Police Commission, as well as the Police Chief for the recent article in the local papers, the Public Service Announcement about identity theft. I thought that that was a fantastic article, and in particular, it, it dovetailed nicely with some of the local press coverage on, on the TV, in which they've talked about various individuals, unscrupulous individuals who have been falsifying information and applying for unemployment checks, and upwards of seventy-five percent of those applications have in fact been fraudulent. So I found that to be really very concerning, and I was really impressed by the communication between the Police Commission and the Chief, and the rapid turnaround to make this a Public Service Announcement, and I thought that that was really impressive, so, so kudos to all of them.
And they had a lot of great suggestions in their PSA.
Absolutely, right, and, and not just, oh, go online, but they really made it very actionable, providing the phone numbers for the three credit agencies, and recommending very specific actions to follow your, your credit checks, to make sure that no one, for example, has your social security number and your date of birth, and can therefore sign up for a credit card in your name and have it billed, you know, somewhere, somewhere else, so. Okay, so that's, that's the first item. The second item, perhaps Sally can weigh in on this, but this is something that's been brought to my attention, and that is the, the trains that run throughout the night. I, I certainly hear them near my home over crossing Sackpoint Road, but I know that many people over on this, this side of town, the trains crossing Leighton, blaring the horn at, you know, three and four o'clock in the morning, and that it's really disturbing, you know, obviously, these are not passenger trains, these are trains that are carrying various construction materials, rocks, et cetera, et cetera. Is there anything that can be done to alter either that schedule, the horns?
Yeah, we, we, we talked about this a few, quite a few years ago.
So look, let me, let me say this.
I lived pretty close to that track, and it used to be six in the evening and nine in the morning, and now.
They've changed the schedule.
Yeah.
They've told us, they've told the state, and they've told the Third Congressional District Office, we're gonna use these tracks when we need to use these tracks. So what happens, Nancy and Bill and Sally, you realize in government, sometimes local government, there's problems that cannot be solved.
Sure.
And this is one of them.
Yeah.
For six years, we've tried, six years, and I just wrote somebody back, a poor lady over there in Fieldstone Court, because of the same issue.
Exactly.
And they don't care, there's no jurisdiction. They gotta run these lines, I've been involved with this for ten years, even on Leighton Avenue, where rail trucks were stuck, I called the federal government, I called the, the people who run the, the lines, and they said, Mr. Fried, I'm sorry, these are federal regulations, we gotta arrest these drivers, and they're, we're gonna keep that car parked there. I mean, it has to idle, because if it doesn't idle, then, this was in the wintertime, then they can never get it started again.
Right.
So it's a good subject to talk about, because this is one of a few problems right now, local government cannot solve.
Right.
And when I got the Third Congressional District Office, they couldn't even solve it.
Right, well.
Yeah, it's the whistle. Then it crosses Leyton, it crosses Mill, it crosses Clintonville, and those poor Fieldstone Court people could almost put their hand out and do a high five with the conductor. I'm 125 yards.
Right.
125 feet, I mean, excuse me, from, from the track, so, I, you know, some pictures kind of go off kilter in my house from the train, but it's the noise that they have to blow the horn because they're crossing a road.
That's a federal regulation, by the way.
I know, and, you know, it's, it's not as bad in the summer when the windows are closed and the air conditioning is on, but in the spring and the fall, when you have the windows open and at 3:00 in the morning, you hear that whistle, and it sounds like it's right above your head. It's, but what are we going to do?
Now, what we will continue to do, we know it may be futile, is every time we get a call, we, the state can't do anything about it, so, I'm not even calling the state anymore. I funnel it through the Third Congressional District Office and see, you know, try to get some clarification. But they've told them, they've told the state, and they've told us point blank, once again, we're going to run our trains when we want to run our trains.
Okay, right, well, I'm just passing along, you know.
No, we're involved with it every day here, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure. But since it was brought to my attention, I felt as though I needed to mention it at the microphone. So, just a follow-up on something that was decided on a while ago, which was the sale of the, what used to be Gateway Community College to ACES. Is there an update on that facility, and did we ever determine whether the town or ACES is actually responsible for plowing that particular parking lot?
So, we didn't sell it, you know that.
This is, the sale, right.
We withdrew our option, our first right of refusal. So, we were out of the building, but we still own the grounds.
Right, the fields.
The fields and the driveway. So, right now, the state is working with ACES, there's millions of hours worth of grants that ACES is going to receive from the state to remediate it, and that's kind of what's happening right now. So, we still have first, we still have the fields that are ours for scheduling girls' softball, adult men's softball, and also any, any other related activities, football.
Football.
This week, I think the football group goes out there.
Their practice, yeah, yeah.
So, that's the story there.
So, the building is empty and they're waiting to start renovations based upon funding?
That's right, that should happen momentarily, actually, so.
Okay, terrific. And then one, one last point, which is, I was just wondering if we could get an update on the fire department CBA, because I've been hearing that it's, you know, imminent. Is that something that we're expecting sometime soon?
Well, it's waiting to be ratified by the fire union.
I see, okay, so.
They're just waiting for them to ratify it.
And related to that, again, getting back to the point that was raised before about the no paramedic pension, would the paramedics be covered by the same CBA or is that a?
Oh, yeah, their union, yeah, absolutely.
So, so, don't the firefighters have not necessarily a formal pension, but they have, you know, an alternative?
Yeah, it's a 457, 401A plan.
Right.
Where the town matches 10%, somebody puts in 5%, I think it is. Each union is different, but, so you put in the money on the 457 plan, ladies and gentlemen, is the government version of the 401K. The 401A is what we match, so we put in 10% of salaries, but they put in a certain amount. So, there is a, we call it a defined contribution.
Defined contribution. So, there is a defined contribution system as opposed to a pension system.
That's right.
But in the end, it functions the same once they retire. Is that correct?
Well.
No, because it's portable, just like a 401K or IRA, they can roll it over.
They can roll it over, right.
Yeah, both the 457, 401A, you know, where the matches can be rolled over to a IRA or, or they could leave it there, but, you know.
Now, let me explain to this point what Bill's talking about, it's a very good point you make. So, God forbid, once someone, well, let's say, once someone retires on the defined benefit, at the point of retirement, the person retiring has to make a decision. Do they want to take the full pension or split it so that if the person who has the pension dies, the spouse gets the benefit? There's a percentage. God forbid, as an example, if someone retires, takes the full pension, two years later, that person dies, the widow gets nothing. What Bill is saying is that in the 457, 401A, that, those rules don't apply, that money's theirs.
Right.
So, you don't forfeit anything.
Right, so, so, in many ways, this option is even more favorable than a pension because it has this flexibility. So, so, the point about we can't attract paramedics because we don't offer a pension, well, we do offer something, and actually, from your description, it's actually even more appealing.
It's very appealing. Now, let me tell you, the downside, there's always, there's always pros and cons, right?
Pros and cons.
So, the flip side of this issue is that in a 401A, 457, 401K program, you're subject to market volatility. In the defined benefit program with all the municipalities, if the market goes down, the cities and towns have to add the money in the annual required contribution to make up the loss. So, there's a level of protection there.
Even more so, right.
And that's the flip side of the issue. A lot of people don't know that, you know, that every city in town, if you have a pension, the market collapses.
Sure.
Well, the next year's annual required contribution is going to go up significantly to make up for that.
Sure.
So, there's great advantage of the 401A, 457, but it doesn't, it doesn't have a mechanism to offset market volatility.
Understood, understood.
That's the issue.
Or as a defined benefit, they know what they're going to get depending upon the number of years of service. It's a defined benefit. Defined contribution depends upon your contribution and how the market is performing.
We have unions here that love the 401A, 457 plan.
Sure.
Because of the town match.
Right, of course. There's certainly pros and cons to all.
Yeah, there are pros and cons, right.
But, but at least there is something that is definitely in place that would impact not only the firefighters, but also the paramedics, or in some cases, they're both, right?
Yes, yes.
So, that is, that is nice that, I just wanted to make that as a point of clarification, so. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second?
Second. All those in favor? All right, have a good night, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Okay.
The proceeding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of